Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our inspirational word for the day, our love for each other proves that we have gone from death to life. And Commissioner Kukoski has our guard dog of the day from the kennel.
Everybody's been making fun of him because he's so little and cute. We have a Chihuahua-Papillon mix. He is a male. He will be available for adoption tomorrow. He's got a lot of energy. He's really cute and loving and he would make somebody a great pet, even myself. I went out to the dog kennel on Friday and we have 28 dogs to pick from and we have big ones out there, too. We have all different sizes, different colors, so come out there and take a look. I almost took one home. It was an Australian Shepherd. She was about a year old and my Australian Shepherd is 15, so I didn't want her to think I was replacing her, so I passed on it. But it was a beautiful dog and it got adopted yesterday, so. And also, I want to really thank the community. I notice underneath the chairs that we have a ton, a ton, a ton of collars and leashes and the hallway is lined with dog food and biscuits and the community has just donated so much to our dog kennel. I just want to thank them for doing that, so thank you very much. And he is available tomorrow if I didn't say. Come on.
Madam Clerk, I understand we have a proclamation here. We have a presentation this morning.
Proclamation proclaiming October as that manufacturing month.
Okay. Dawn Romancik, our Director of Community Development, if you want to come up to one of the podiums here, I'll just do a quick reading on the proclamation here. October 7, 2016 has been designated National Manufacturing Day by Consortium of American Manufacturers. In October, been designated Manufacturing Month by the State of Ohio to bring the career potential manufacturing students and our transitioning workforce. Whereas Lorraine County Manufacturers, AutoCam Precision, BASF, Beckett Gas, Crane Aerospace, Contour, Tool, Avon High School, the list goes on and on, have all committed to panel discussions and other events that they've done a great job of coordinating a lot of people to participate. The Lorraine County Board of Commissioners resolved that the month of October shall be designated Lorraine County Manufacturing Month in recognition of job-creating local manufacturers, their employees who make goods sold throughout the world, and the educational institutions providing our next generation of workers with the skills to succeed. This is signed by all three of the Commissioners. I'll come down and give that to you, Dawn.
I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for this proclamation. Manufacturing Month has been an annual event now for the last several years and the Lorraine County Growth Partnership as a whole has really invested some time and effort working with our local manufacturers to remind people how important manufacturing is to all of Lorraine County and that there are good quality jobs that are available that need to be filled if our future as a county is going to continue to be prosperous. The commitment shown by our partners, the leadership from this board, our local manufacturers have been outstanding to allow us to be able to get into the local schools at both the high school and the middle school level to begin to expose children to something that, when I was growing up, you would have never thought would have been odd. And that is that manufacturing is a career choice and it can be one where you can raise a family on. Over the years, while I was growing up, we seem to have lost that message. And if we do not fill those jobs, we will all suffer. So one of the big ways to make sure that we bring our jobs back is to make sure we have people that are able to do those jobs. And manufacturing has changed greatly over the years. It's cleaner, it's safer, it is a lot more independent thinking. It takes a certain level of creativity in a lot of these shops with the advanced manufacturing. The new technology with 3D printing is not a threat, but it's an opportunity for us to continue to make things and to improve our lives and improve the job opportunities for all of our families. So with that, I'd like to highlight a couple of events that are coming up. On October 4th at the Descheds Center, it'll be Business After Hours. The Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce will be holding it there with manufacturing and advanced manufacturing as its main focus. And then our main kickoff event is actually being hosted by Parker Hanifin on Turn's Road in Elyria. And that'll be at 8:30 in the morning with the kickoff starting at 9 o'clock with the speech. And at that point, this proclamation will make it there to be presented to Parker Hanifin and all of the people that have made this possible. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I've said for a couple of decades, I spend too much time trying to send our kids to college instead of sending them to skilled trade schools to learn how to actually do what we need to make. That's what we do best in Lorraine County in northeast Ohio.
And we do have classes offered at JVS where everyone that makes it into that class and goes through gets hired. And unfortunately, there are still seats available, it seems, every year, so those are jobs unfulfilled.
Yeah, times have definitely changed and, you know, we say in Ohio, I mean, there's tens of thousands of jobs out there all the time that Ohioans simply aren't applying for or the skill set doesn't match with the skills desired. I know our community college is doing an amazing job of narrowing that gap of the skill set, but yes, at one time, the thinking was that if you didn't go to college, then you ended up working in manufacturing. But nowadays, college education can play an important role in the manufacturing industry and it's important to know that you can apply your college education actually helping to make a manufacturer successful.
Very much so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. And we also have a presentation this morning. I'd like to welcome Dr. Evans up to update us on Coroner's Office. Obviously, we're putting a question before the voters concerning the crime drug lab and the coroner levy. Five years, less than 50 cents a month, from what I understand. But I know that, Dr. Evans, your office is sadly been seeing way too much work as a result of this heroin epidemic and the struggles we're having in the county with that. But I want to welcome you to our meeting this morning. And first of all, thank you for all the work that you do. I know that you've been very active out in the community, engaging the community and letting them know about the severity of the heroin epidemic and how you are seeing it firsthand. And I have attended several of those community forums and just wanted to thank you for what you've done. Your message has been very effective in reaching the community and I know the groups that are putting on those presentations have been very thankful that you've been there to tell that firsthand account of what's been taking place. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me today. I'm going to give a little PowerPoint presentation. Are you able to see?
Yes.
How do I switch the... Okay. Well, basically, you know, I'm the coroner's office, a handful of doctors and our office manager, Dawn Korick. We're a real small department in the overall scheme of things for the county, I guess. But unfortunately, we found ourselves in the middle of a huge problem. And it's, as we're going to see, it's the opiate epidemic. If you go back in time for like 20 years, we averaged about 15 over... You've heard some of this. If you've gotten to my speeches, you've heard some of this already, but we averaged about 15 overdose deaths a year in Lorraine County. Well, then in 2010, 2011, we bumped up to 20. And 15, 20, that was within reason. We didn't get too noticed about it. But then all of a sudden, in 2012, we went to over 60. So in one year, we had tripled the number of overdose deaths. And we said, oh, my goodness, what happened? What's going on? At first, we thought, well, there must be bad drugs on the street that people are dying from. We did tests on the drugs and no, they were the drugs that people normally take. But something had changed. We had tripled in one year. The other thing that we noticed was the demographics had changed. This was no longer an inner-city indigent population. This was now white, middle-class, suburban, a lot of females. In the past, it was drug overdose problems were 80 to 90% male problems because the males do the more risky things normally. All of a sudden, we were seeing a huge population of women that are dying of drug overdose. We said, something has happened, something has changed, something radically has changed. And what we found was, we were in the middle of the opiate epidemic. We had just come late to the party. In 2007, drug overdose deaths became the leading cause of death in the state of Ohio. So we didn't really hit it to 2012. And that's when it became the leading cause of accidental death in Lorraine County. But you can see, I mean, people, when I first started giving this lecture, first started going around the county, as you said, and warning people about this, they were saying, oh, Dr. Evans, you're overreacting. You know, they say, it's not that big of a problem. Oh, it's not that big of a problem? Over 600 people die every day in the world of a drug overdose. Over 100 people die every day in the state of Ohio of a drug overdose, or in the United States of a drug overdose. Over eight people every day die in the state of Ohio. And when I first started doing this lecture, I was saying, one to two people die every week in Lorraine County. No longer. It's two to three people die every week in Lorraine County. In fact, part of the reason I was a little bit late is I had a drug overdose this morning that I had to go to. So I mean, it's one of these, it's a constant thing. It's like, I tell people, for us, it's like the waves of the ocean. They just keep coming and, you know, we're trying to stop it, but we can't stop these waves. The other thing that people don't realize is say, well, you had in 2012, 65 drug overdose deaths. So that's 65 people. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Every drug overdose deaths we have, there's 130 people out there that are addicted to medication. There's 800 people out there that are using medications inappropriately. So when you think of, I mean, do the numbers. I mean, if we had 65, 65 times 130, you see that there's thousands and thousands of people in Lorraine County that are having problems with drugs. It's just not the 65 who are dying. When I first started doing this lecture, the other thing that bothered me was, you know, I had a lot of people that were telling me, oh, why are you worrying about these drug addicts? Or it's a thinning of the herd kind of thing. A lot of people were being very judgmental. A lot of people were talking glibly about something that they knew nothing about. And it really was disappointing to hear people say this. But I said, you know, look, if you're not going to care about the people who are overdosing and about the big drug problem we have, what about everything else? 50 to 80% of our crime in Lorraine County and across the United States is drug-related. So if your car is broken into, it's probably for drugs. Your house is broken into, it's probably for drugs. There's a reason our homicides are way up this year, probably related to drugs. The last Fatality Review meeting that I had within the last few weeks, we review all the crashes that happened in Lorraine County. And we do that quarterly for as long as I've been coroner. And we look at it and we say, what can we do to prevent some of these crashes? Well, guess what? 80% of these crashes are by people who are either on drugs or alcohol or both. And so you say, well, how does the drug problem affect me? Well, when this drug or alcohol intoxicated individual is coming at you at 55 miles an hour, all of a sudden, it does affect you. And so it does affect each and every one of us kind of thing. And so it's something we need to do something about. We've been partnering with, as I'm sure you know, the Crime Lab, Lorraine County Drug Task Force, the Prosecutor's Office, the Sheriff's Department, every Lorraine County Police Department, state federal agencies. We're trying to see what we can do to stop this, to stop this. One of the things that we're doing right now is we're testing the drugs and when we can put the drug to a dealer, then the federal or the state prosecutor's office can go after that dealer and put him away. And so what we're doing is we're trying to get these, enforce this. We're trying to get people off the street that are supplying these drugs to our young people. And if I don't have the resources to do the tests that I need to do, because some of these tests cost a lot of money, then we're basically letting people get away with murder because the prosecutor depends on me to get the labs, depends on me to find out what they overdosed on, depends on me to go into court and testify against the dealer. So there's resources that we need to be able to do this and it's expanding as we speak. In 2016, this year, our caseload is up 20% already. Our autopsies are up 24% already. Our drug deaths are up 100% already. And I'll speak why that is. Our homicides in Lorraine County are up 64%. This is a huge problem that's... Remember, we've got this small little department. We've got this huge problem that we're trying to face. And you say, well, Dr. Evans, you just said that this is a worldwide problem, this is a national problem, this is a state problem. How come you're having trouble when everybody else is doing fine? Well, the reason is that if you compare us to our closest in size counties, so we're comparing apples to apples, we're hundreds of thousands of dollars underfunded compared to other counties our size. If you compare us to the national average, we're over $400,000, my department is, underfunded. And so we don't have the resources to do the things that the other counties and the other states can do. Well, back to where our problem is, I am going to say a positive and show you what we can do when we have the resources to do it. As you remember, in 2011, 2012, the drug overdose deaths tripled. And so we said, the coroner's office, I said, I have to do something. I have to save some of these people. I understand that the long-term treatment for this is prevention, enforcement, and treatment, but what are we going to do in the short term to save some of these people's lives? And so I got together a group of people, including the Addus Board, the local police departments, the local hospitals, a lot of the community action people, the Sheriff's Department, so, and the Prosecutor's Office. So what can we do? What can we do to save some of these people in the short term? We came up with Dawn Lorraine County. And what Dawn Lorraine County is, is that one of the things we found when we investigated this was that a lot of the people that died were already dead by the time the rescue squad got to them. And the reason for this is that when you overdose on narcotics, what happens is you stop breathing. Well, think about it for a minute. How long can you go without breathing? Maybe five minutes, up to five minutes. After five minutes, you're dead. Nobody can bring you back. You can be in the hospital, you can have the rescue squad, you're done. After five minutes, you're done. The average time it takes a rescue squad to get to a scene is 10 to 15 minutes. So what we were finding is, by the time the rescue squad got to these people, they were gone. We couldn't bring them back. But the interesting thing we saw was that the police were often there in a timely manner because, remember, the rescue squads are back at their base, waiting for a call. And so when they get called, they got to get ready, get in a truck and go out. The police, on the other hand, are constantly cruising the neighborhoods. And so when they get a call, they're within a couple minutes. They're in there before that five-minute period. And so we thought, well, if we can get the drug saving, the Narcan or Naloxone, the antidote, if we could get it into the hands of the police department, we might be able to save some of these people that we're losing. Unfortunately, you can't do that. It's against the law. Police are not medical people. Police can't carry medicines. They can't deliver medicines. It's against the law. And so they were shooting us down. We went to our local state Senator Gail Manning and said, Gail, can you help us? Can you do something? You know, the state of Ohio is telling me we can't do this and I'm telling you, we can save people's lives. You know, we've put a lot of time, money, and effort into it. I said, we can save one person, it'll be worth it. She said, well, let me see what I can do. And she went to the state legislature and said, you know, look, we're going to make Lorraine County a pilot project. And the rest of the state legislature said, yeah, good. Do you people in Lorraine County want to do something crazy? We'll let you do it. It'll be a pilot project, only Lorraine County can do it. And if it blows up in your face, well, then that's mud on Gail Manning and Dr. Evans' face kind of thing, you know? Go ahead, you guys go ahead and try it.
I think there was a lot of curiosity as to whether there could have been a way to, you know, find a better solution. So I don't know if it was quite framed that way, Doctor, but, you know, I saw a lot of support for it.
Oh, and Gail pushed it and it got passed. I mean, it was like a 100% pass, you know? It wasn't like, you know, people were fighting against her to stop it because partially, people were saying, hey, you want to take the chance? Go ahead and take the chance. And basically, what was happening was the police officers were allowed to carry the Narcan. It's basically a squirt gun. You know, they're squirting it into the nose of the people and there's no needles involved. They don't really have to be medical people to do this kind of thing. And that's why it's such an easy thing to do. Remember, most of the people that are dying of these drugs are snorting them. Well, if you snort the heroin, you know, and it's absorbed, you can use the antidote by putting it in the nose and it's absorbed. And the good news is, in the first year of our project, we saved 60 people. 60 people after one year by our police departments doing this, 60 people were alive because of the project that we started in Lorraine County. An update on the numbers, it's over 200 people now. Our police departments have saved over 200 people in Lorraine County. The other good news is that it changed the mindset. It used to be cops and criminals and now it was victims and lifesavers. And so people are starting to get an idea that, hey, these people are victims that are having this problem.
Dr. Evans, can I stop you for a second? That 200 people, is that just what the police have saved with the Narcan? What about the ambulance services?
Right. They've saved a lot, a lot also, but we don't keep their numbers.
I think that would be important, especially if we should know that. I think we should know that number just because we need to know how many people are really overdosing every day.
The problem for them is they're not getting there soon enough to give it. And so the key numbers are the ones that are getting there the quickest that can save these people. So we went from cops and criminals to victims and lifesavers. The other thing is that because we were successful in Lorraine County, it spread to the rest of Ohio. They had a law that said the rest of Ohio can now do it. So we have police officers all over the state of Ohio that are carrying Narcan. And I got calls from all over the United States from police departments and actually internationally, from police departments that wanted to use our policies and our procedures. They saw how well it worked and they said, will you share it? And we shared it with everybody that asked this. And soon, in effect, we saved, with our little project that we did in Lorraine County, we saved hundreds of lives. But in effect, because it spread to the rest of Ohio and also outside of Ohio, our little project that Lorraine County did is going to end up saving thousands of lives. So it's the kind of thing that you can do if you spend time and the resources to do it. Well, back to our drug overdose problem. As you can see, as you remember, we tripled in 2012. Unfortunately, I have bad news. We're over doubling this year from last year, over doubling. And the reason, they say, well, why is that? You know, if you look at the slide, what happened was, you know, we were at a steady level. All of a sudden, we tripled. And then I think the Narcan kind of leveled it off again. Unfortunately, fentanyl hit in the last year or so. Most of our, a lot of our overdose deaths are fentanyl. Fentanyl is a synthetic narcotic. What the drug dealers found was, they can make fentanyl up in a laboratory. They had apparently some Chinese scientists that they imported to show them how to do it. They make up the fentanyl in a laboratory and they don't have to worry about poppies. They don't have to worry about growing things. It's very easy for them to make. It's very cheap for them to make. And so what they started doing is substituting fentanyl for the heroin or mixing fentanyl with the heroin. And the problem is that the fentanyl is 50 to 100 times stronger than the heroin. And so if you have an individual and he doesn't know, he uses heroin, he uses the normal dose he normally uses, well, unfortunately, that dose is 50 to 100 times what his normal dose is. So it's no wonder they're dying and overdosing. Unfortunately for us, these are synthetic medications that are made up in a lab and they're not tested for easily. In fact, I have some of them I can't even test for in spite of the money that we're spending on trying to test, trying to find out what drugs they overdosed on. You know, there's different ones. There's carbamfentil, three-methylfentil. Every day, they come up with a new one. Well, you know, the lab that we use that does the drug tests has to try to keep ahead of them. Every time I'm asking for more and more tests, they're unfortunately charging me more and more money. And so, you know, I've had already this year, come to the Commissioners and say, look, I mean, I'm bankrupt. I'm broke. I, you know, I can't function like this kind of thing. And it's not getting better, it's getting worse. When I first started doing this talk, you know, back in 2012, I used to read the ages and the sex of the person that died and say, who claimed the body? This is a son, this is a daughter, this is a husband, this is a wife, this is a mother, this is father. Who claimed the body? I used to read those. Unfortunately, because our numbers were rising so much, I was no longer able to do that because it took too long on my speech to do that. And so what I started doing was showing a cemetery and saying, look, this is how many people are dying in Lorraine County, just to give you a visual perspective of what's happening. Unfortunately, it's going up. I need a bigger cemetery. Thank you.
Doctor, I guess, two things. One, I was curious, when you talked about saving 200 people in Lorraine County, just the police alone, you know if any of those are repeats?
Yes, some of them have repeated, you know? And one of the things, you know, the urban legend, there's a lot of urban legends out there about people misusing Narcan and things of that nature. You know, what I keep trying to tell these people, you're not seeing what I'm seeing. You're not in the homes with the loved ones that, you know, have lost someone that's connected to them. You know, if we can save one person, like I said before, it's worth it to me. Are some of these people going back and reusing? Yeah. Because part of recovery from heroin is relapse. You know, if we had Tom Stuber, the head of La Cotta, that gives his lecture, he'll tell you that a normal thing is relapse. And so, yeah, we've had people that have re-overdosed and we've saved more than once. But we have people that are successful, that we have saved and have gone on to rehab and have gone on to a productive life. So, yeah, it's not perfect.
Well, the sad part is, you know, we've made a big push on the Narcan and the Naloxin. We save people, but then we don't have the treatment facilities to be able to keep them from relapsing and continuing to use. And, you know, they were bragging in Columbus about creating 400 new treatment beds in the state. Well, you know, some quick division by 88 counties quickly shows you that's not something you should be bragging about. That's certainly not something that's going to work. But that was the political spin that was on it. Unfortunately, it wasn't to the benefit of Ohioans. I was just curious, your thoughts? I've seen the billboards about everybody getting your free Narcan and carrying, I think I saw a billboard even said about carrying Narcan if you're a user. And I'm just concerned about whether that sends a message of false security message that, okay, I can continue using and if for some reason I do overdose, hey, Narcan's going to save me.
Yeah, I don't think so. Are people, do some people abuse the Narcan? I'm sure. I mean, some people abuse Tylenol, you know? So I'm sure, I can't speak for 100%. You know, when I started this, if I had my way, we'd have had Narcan dispensers everywhere in a public place that you saw AEDs because it's such a life-saving thing and I want it in the hands of as many people as I can. What you find out is that the users don't want to use Narcan. They don't want to use it for a couple reasons. Number one, they spent money to get this high. And if you give them Narcan, they lose the high. They've wasted their money, number one. Number two, if they're a real user and you give them Narcan, you're going to send them into a relapse. You know, they depend on that drug to keep them functioning. And so you're going to send them into withdrawal. And so they don't want that. They don't want withdrawal. They don't want you to waste your money. Now, I'm not saying, you know, like you said, that is there a few people, I'm sure, that have... have misused the drug? I'm sure there has. But most of the people are using it appropriately to save lives.
And then we've also heard that, I guess, when individuals have actually been taken to the hospital, there's been cases where maybe they had to apply the Narcan again hours later?
Oh, for sure. For sure. Especially with this fentanyl, because it's so powerful that I've had my police officers say, you know, "Hey, I gave him a dose, he didn't come back. I gave him a second dose. He didn't come back. I gave him a third dose. I gave him a fourth dose." Sometimes they give him four or five doses before they come back. The other thing is Narcan wears off quicker than the drug wears off. And so as an ER doctor, we all knew that, you know, just because they woke them up at the scene, doesn't mean they're not going to go back into the coma. And so, you know, we tell the rescue squads and the police departments, "Look, even though they awoke and they're looking good, you need to bring them into the hospital because we need to watch them for the next four to six hours because they may go back into a coma, and we may need to give them more Narcan."
Yeah, I know. I had received a phone call when this board gave approval for the Addus Board to move forward with their initiative. And the phone call, I was, well, disappointed and shocked. I can't say necessarily surprised. But the individual said, well, in this, their words, certainly not mine, that, "Well, these are reckless individuals, and why should we have to pay for their lack of responsibility?" But as you pointed out, you know, not everybody that's out there that ends up being a user is somebody that's necessarily breaking into your home, even though there are a lot of people who are trying to get that money for their next fix. You know, there are a lot of individuals that, you know, their daughters, their sons, their fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, whatever it may be, that we can actually save and, you know, hopefully turn around their lives and help them be productive members of society again.
The thing, you know, you've come to some of my lectures. The thing I tell people is I see two types of people that end up on drugs, two types of people that end up in my office, unfortunately. And the one type is young people that did something crazy, were affected by peer pressure. And so when I give these lectures, I say, "Is anybody out there, when you were young, did you do anything crazy? Were you affected by peer pressure?" Well, everybody raises their hand. We all did. We were all doing crazy things. You know, maybe heroin wasn't in your high school, so you weren't doing that, but you were sneaking out and having a beer or something. You know, you did something crazy. The other half of the patients I see are people that had a problem and went to their doctor, and their doctor put them on medication. So I say, "Well, how many people out there have ever listened to what your doctor said? Took some medicine that your doctor told you?" And everybody raised their hand again. So I says, "Okay, so those are the people who are dying. Those are the people who have their drug problem. Those are the people that either young people that did something crazy or normal people in your eyes, normal people that listened to their doctor and got addicted because their doctor gave them narcotics." So everybody stood up. There's no one left to throw the stone. So quit being judgmental on these people. A lot of these people, like you said, you know, I'm talking to their parents, they say, "He was in National Honor Society. He has a scholarship to go to Ohio State or a scholarship to go MIT." Like I said, the demographics has changed. This is not, you know, an inner-city indig population. This is, you know, white, middle-class America. This is, I have been in every section of our, you know, just as you said, I've given lectures in every section of our county. I've been with dead young men and women in every section of our county. It's devastating.
Well, thank you, Dr. Evans. I know that your department's certainly been overwhelmed. We all saw your recent request for additional funding because you're certainly overwhelmed. I know our prosecutor's office is trying to keep up with all the crime-related cases associated with drugs. They are greatly overwhelmed. And it's a problem that we need to address because, you know, the crime is going to continue to be a problem. We're losing way too many loved ones. On this initiative that's going before the voters, it's on a hundred thousand dollar home. I think it's just under six dollars for the whole year. So, and it's, it just goes to show another important role that county government plays in this whole thing. I think sometimes people don't connect the dots about the different roles that county government plays and things, whether it's through our crime lab or whether it's through your office. And this is a serious issue that needs to be addressed, and hopefully the voters will hear your message. I just want to thank you for all the community outreach you're doing because you're doing a great job. And I know after those forums, so many people say, "Wow, he really just hit it out of the park." And it's just, you're just relaying the facts.
Yeah.
And the facts are very, very alarming and a great concern to the community. So thank you very much for your work and all that you do.
Yeah, thank you.
There was an article in the paper just not too long ago, "One Thousand Overdoses Hit Ohio County in Two Months." Hospital emergency workers in a southwest Ohio county have handled an average of nearly fifteen overdoses a day since a powerful drug used to sedate elephants was found in heroin in the area about two months ago. A thousand overdoses in two months. That's five hundred a month. And I know you are working hard, Dr. Evans. I've seen you at numerous events talking about this. You're very knowledgeable, and you just, like he said, give the facts and you put it out there. And it seems there's a lot more people willing to come out and talk about it. It's affecting so many people that there's not that shame associated with it as much as there was before. And I think that's partly because of you being out there and talking about it and getting people aware of what's going on. So we need to keep educating our public and our children. I did see the video that the, I think it was our prosecutor's office and La Cotta and Addus Board put together for our students, for Liria students. And George Corey was quoted as saying, "Two hundred thousand people in Ohio are addicted to drugs right now."
I believe it.
So, is that?
I believe it.
You believe that?
Probably, that's a low number.
Low number?
That's a low number.
So, yeah, we need to, first of all, do something about prevention and continue with the Narcan as much as we can and try to figure out what to do with these people. You've also done a couple of things with the Perry Project, the Police-Assisted Addiction Recovery, and also the Vivitrol shots. I know that you're pushing forward with that also. So we have a lot of tools that we can use to try to get a handle on this.
Commissioner, just for, you know, you talked a lot about the drug epidemic and the increased work, but other conversations that I've had with Dr. Evans pertains to things like being able to do more autopsies because of budget constraints, closure for families. And also, there's a second piece to that. We don't really do Level One trauma here. It all goes to Metro Health. And when people perish in Cuyahoga County, the autopsies that are being done in Cuyahoga County, and then the billing we're getting back here for all of those. Can you speak to that just a little bit?
Yeah. It's, as you said, we don't have a tertiary care center here. And so, you know, even some of our overdose deaths, you know, end up being lifelighted. You know, they lifelike just about everybody that's in a car wreck nowadays because we don't, neither one of our hospitals are a trauma center. And so, you know, that's lost to my office. You know, I have nothing to do with it, and I have no control over the cost because then it's the Cuyahoga County, and then, you know, they basically can charge us whatever they want to charge us, kind of thing. And so, just as you're saying, you know, we talk about the drug problem because that's our biggest problem right now, but people are dying of other things also. And so my office is still trying to do the best they can with all of the other things that we normally do. But we have a limited amount of resources. And so because of that, I have to make decisions on every day, you know, am I going to follow this up? Am I going to do a blood test? Am I going to do an autopsy? I have to make the decisions. Where do I get the biggest bang for the buck? And I feel bad about that because, you know, your loved one died, and you want to know why he died. And if I can't justify spending the dollars because it's not a high profile or it's not something that I think I'm going to get a return from, then I am not able to help you. You know, you may be stuck at the scene waiting on me because I'm at another scene, you know, kind of thing. I mean, there's delays that happen because of, you know, I've had three calls at one time, you know, this end of the county, that end of the county, and this end of the county. And I try to, you know, get some of my other doctors to try to get involved. But, you know, there's a certain amount of resources I have, and, you know, it's just not anywhere near with the resources I have.
You know, I don't, sometimes it's the hard side of a topic that gets people's attention. I don't mean to have a gore effect here, but, you know, you can have a loved one waiting on the side of the road for a coroner to show up because they can't do anything until one of your staff or yourself arrived there. And I know I wouldn't want my family member in that situation with inadequate resources to serve a community this large. You have very limited staffing. Would you explain your staffing so that the public knows?
Basically, the handful of doctors and myself and our office coordinator, you know, just like you said, when every death scene, the coroner is in charge of by law, we are in charge of every death scene. And so if there's a wreck, you know, out in the southern part of the county, and I'm at, you know, this just happened recently, I was at a drowning in Sheffield Lake, and there was a wreck out in southern part of the county, well, they can't move the bays, they can't move the cars, they can't move anything. And so now you have a biling on the road, you have a road that's blocked until I can free up from what I was doing to get out there. And so, you know, it's very limited. You know, I have recently added an investigator that helps me some because I can send him to get it started in one spot when I'm in another spot. But we're very limited because, as you saw, we're a small department. We're peanuts compared to the rest of...
And most of your doctors are part-time? They work intermittently for you?
Right. They work, most of them are working for minimum wage. I mean, you know, and they're doing this for two reasons. One is community service, but number two, because they're friends of mine, so they're helping me out. And so they're working for minimum wage. So I got doctors working for twelve dollars an hour, you know, and they're getting called out at three o'clock in the morning and going into a woods in southern Lorraine County, you know, to find somebody to overdose in the woods, kind of thing. And they were getting twelve dollars an hour to do that. So, I mean, if one of my guys quits, I'm in big trouble because there's only so many doctors I can talk into working for twelve dollars an hour and do the kind of things that we do.
I didn't mean to embarrass anybody, but I wanted to bring those facts up. I think they're important. I think that if it was a deceased family member of yours, you'd want somebody out at that scene as quick as possible. If there's a question on an autopsy to bring closure to the family, I think is an important thing that should be provided to the family. And of course, the limited amount of staff that Doc Evans has been dealing with, I'm almost certain they drive their own personal cars. They, you know, they're on twenty-four-hour call-out. I'm pointing all these things out because the resources have been stretched extremely tight. Even before going into the epidemic, there was a need for this. We talked about it. And then the last two years, as you know, I've talked to you many times about additional resources to the coroner's office, and they have done a yeoman's job with a very limited amount of money. This is a very needed, very deserved, and the community deserves this service to be better. And it's not better because they don't have the resources, not because they don't have the talent or the ability to do it. They need money.
It's like everything, Doc, you do a great job. I've seen you out there, plenty of cases, and what we've got issues going on our inner-city and then the suburbs. I mean, issue thirty-three passing, it's five sixty a month, five sixty a year on a hundred thousand valuation. I mean, you can't look at better money being spent and tying into all the other issues we're working on. I mean, and you do a great job. Wouldn't want your job. Your staff does a great job.
It can be penny wise and pound foolish. I mean, this money may save your life because, you know, if it helps us get some of these drug, intoxicate people off our roads that are going to run into you, if it helps us stop some of these people that are going to break into your house to try to steal your money and, you know, maybe harm you, you know, so it's penny wise and pound foolish if you say, "Well, I don't want to spend the money." Well, then you're going to have to take the risk of what happens when we don't approach this drug problem. We need to do something about this drug problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you. We'll go with our order of business.
Do you want to do that other presentation?
We'll knock them all out and then go to the board of business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess Willow Creek.
We have Don. He has a very short presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it on our agenda there.
Actually, I was a little late to get it there.
That's okay.
It's not there.
And Don's got such a nice haircut today that I thought that we'd get him on camera.
Get him on camera. Get the makeup on there.
Thanks, Don.
Hey, where else?
Okay. Don Romancik, our Community Development Director, an update on Willow Creek Project.
Thank you again, Board, for having me up here. Just real briefly, the Department, your Department of Community Development has been extremely busy and working along a couple of different partnerships. The Willow Creek Project is actually the result of several years of work, working with the Black River Area of Concern Group that you have me serve on on behalf of you. The Lorraine County General Health District actually, through that group, was able to bring in a couple of dollars to do some preliminary work in the Willow Creek watershed, which is primarily located in Eaton Township. And those dollars identified a bunch of potential projects that we could look at to help improve the ecology of the area, improve the health of the Willow Creek watershed, but also the Black River and Lake Erie. The, that document was the basis of the grant application that then we submitted to Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, and we were successful in bringing in six hundred thousand dollars. We just went out to bid recently and are ready to award a contract to a local company, Site Tech, that's actually located right around the corner from Eaton Township Park. And before you, as a schematic of the design, what we're proposing to do is to actually take the, essentially what is nothing more than a channelized ditch right now, and turn it back to the stream it used to be, so to provide some curves, to provide a flood plain, to allow the water, when the rains come, to spread out and slow down. If we are success, as this project gets done, we will actually be able to restore about a thousand linear feet of this, the stream in a public park and be able to provide and hold back about three point five acre-feet of stormwater. An acre foot is essentially the amount of space, one foot high, one acre of area for water. So we are holding back three and a half acre-feet with this project being done. And everyone knows that Eaton Township and much of Lorraine County is very flat, and we have a tendency to be able to flood. So to be able to get any type of stormwater detention is crucial for the people living downstream. So we hope to reduce our incident. This bid was actually highly sought after as well. We ended up with nine different companies bidding on this project. Two of them were from out of state, one from West Virginia and one from far away as Wisconsin. And we even had a group from the state of Maryland ask. And yet Site Tech from Eaton Township ended up having the successful bid. So it was highly competitive, and we were fortunate that Site Tech was actually able to fill out the forms completely accurately and give us the lowest price. So we're able to keep this money in locally and begin to churn those dollars and have additional economic impact for all of us involved. And Eaton Township has actually offered to, or offered, they've committed to maintaining the improvements that we're making, essentially the spillway to make sure that it works as well as minimal mowing and whatnot. But this is a hundred percent grant-funded. The dollars are coming back, and they're going fortunately to a local company in a highly visible location within our county. And we also had additional funds, so we're able to do some more improvements over at the Peak Preserve, again, another highly visible public area within Eaton Township, where we will be doing some wetland enhancements totaling fifty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. This will also be a hundred percent grant-funded. And we'll be planting trees, shrubs, live staking, where actually that's kind of unique with willow trees. with willow trees, you can basically cut a branch off, and if you cut it correctly, you can stick it in the ground and it will take root and turn into another tree.
Really?
Yeah, it's amazing, there are a couple of trees that do that. You have to do it while they're dormant, and actually Lynn and our Black River crew have been doing that throughout Lorraine in some areas. The one year they did about ten thousand live stakes, they were tired. And it has worked out very well. So this is just one example of when we're working together and moving forward, we're able to bring some ecological restoration, some stormwater relief, and bring dollars back, and I just wanted to have that opportunity to present this to you and answer any questions you may have.
Don, why don't you explain, you and I know and a couple of other people, but a couple of reasons why we want to do stream restoration and, and what it means to the overall scheme of things, what we're doing in the stormwater district in conjunction with the county's efforts in community development.
Stream restoration is actually an opportunity for us to achieve multiple goals at once and to also bring in some dollars into the community that stretch our, our dollars even further. As I had mentioned, you know, with this project in Eaton Township Park, we are going to get three and a half acres of, acre feet of stormwater detention. But we are also, through the plants and the activities that are going on there, we are going to be able to drop the sediment out of the water to prevent it from getting to the Black River and Lake Erie. The wetland plants that we're doing are very effective at not only taking up some of the water, but more importantly, they take up the nutrients that would otherwise be going in to the Black River and then Lake Erie. And it's protecting really our water supply as much as anything. And then also it's pulling out the heavy metals as well. And again, that's again protecting our ecology, but protecting the fish. We've actually with the Black River AOC recently been able to recommend the removal of the fish advisory, so that now that the Black River is functioning as any other waterway in the state of Ohio when it comes to fish and being able to eat the fish that you would catch out of the river, which is a great step forward for us. And again, hopefully, as that word gets out, we'll continue to have more tournaments like Cabela's and some other things. So there's also a strong economic development advantage to some of these projects on the long game. So we're improving our local environment, we're protecting our, you know, the environment, we're actually creating public service through prevention of flooding, protecting of property, and then long-term really becoming, you know, in protecting our waterways, reducing our costs to provide services such as water. And then also with the outdoor activities, ideally growing our local economy, so travel and tourism. So for one little, small investment, we can get a big bang for our buck.
And, and it was important that we, we, we were granted property owner permission?
Yes, Eaton Township has been a great partner in this, and they, they also worked with other, we have other projects in this Willow Creek watershed that will be looking for additional land. And they've coordinated with their local property owners to allow us access to actually walk the land, get an understanding of what's going on. Again, it's a very collaborative process. It's been quite an effort to be able to do this, and this is just one of the many things that we're all involved in, as you're aware, I keep showing up here, so.
Well, you know, it, we're, we're just trying to inform the public more than the board because obviously you make the final determination on contracts for us and the things that we're doing, but we don't talk enough about, A, bringing the money back here, but B, all of the things that, that Don alludes to with regard to where this water goes, it ultimately ends up in the Black River, which ultimately ends up in Lake Erie. We have to address the problem prior to it getting in the river, it really is hard to address it once it is in the river. And, and you mentioned the uptake of nutrients, we just got a new MS four area up in.
Henrietta.
Henrietta?
The great metropolis of Henrietta.
Yeah, the great metropolis of Henrietta. And I, I was a little confused by it all when it came in and I, I, the EPA has these things, they call leaps and jumps, and not all of these areas are connected, and I'm not sure I completely understand them, I, I think I asked them one time, well, what about a skip? And, and so I had Don do some research on this. Why in the world could we have a designation for what would normally be in an urbanized area in such a rural community in our, in our county? And we come to find out that there's, there's a lot of nutrient-rich runoff being put in to the environment out there, as such, they designated an MS four area for permitting, and it's, that's quite challenging, you want to speak to that a bit?
That is actually Henrietta, and the section that is urbanized is located in the Vermillion River watershed. And the Vermillion River, the Black River, and the Rocky River, which also is a watershed that touches Lorraine County as well. They have all had studies done by Ohio EPA known as TMDL or Total Maximum Daily Load, and they look at six different potential pollutants, sediment, metals, bacteria, those type of things, nutrients. And each one of our rivers or our major watersheds in the county has been degraded to some point where they've identified these levels of excess sediment or excess nutrients as examples. And by currently, under our permit, we're required to address them, our National Pollution, Discharge and Elimination System Permit, which the Stormwater District over, basically operates overall for our, I think, well, will be eight MS fours now in the townships. Currently, we are to address them, but they have not put on numeric requirements just yet. Now, some of the individual industries and your wastewater treatment plants in the cities actually have hard numeric limits where they can only let so much out, they have not done that to us yet. And by us doing projects like this and being able to demonstrate that we are taking up nutrients and that we are doing certain things and improving the water quality, if we can continue to demonstrate that, we are hopeful too that we can avoid having hard numerical numbers put on us and standards that we would have to meet. As everyone knows, regulation doesn't typically get easier to work with, it gets more and more restrictive. And so some things like this that we can do to at least maintain the existing regulatory system we have is a huge step forward in cost savings for us long-term.
And, and one of the, one of the major reasons that we formed the Stormwater Districts several years ago was to address the MPDS permitting process, the MS fours that were being designated in, in the unincorporated areas. Ten years ago, I, I never would have thought that we were going to be dealing with so much MS four area in, in a very rural part of our community. That's only going to grow as they tighten the regulations. If you think that we get surprised sometimes, you should see the look on the township trustees' face when they find out they've got a rural designation in, in the middle of farmland somewhere. So they're unprepared, you know, to, to understand that completely, and to the Stormwater District, we've been able to attack a lot of these problems. The best way to get, they did not have the MS four designation is to do projects like this or to combat the nutrient-rich runoff in the stormwater before it gets to the river.
Correct.
So hopefully we'll have some more of these projects in, in the future that can be funded from outside resources.
For the viewing public to help them all out, MPDS, and the runoff is to explain when you're driving down the road, there's construction going on or new development, it's the stakes with the felt to stop the runoff of what's happening and going to our stormwater area.
Well, that's one of the mitigation measures, measures to stop silting.
Public doesn't quite understand all the language, so explaining what it is when they visualize it, it's actually the stakes down the road with the felt or the webbing along it to stop runoff into our stormwater and freshwater areas. So that's what we're policing.
Go ahead, Don.
Okay, that is, that is one. Also, now when someone develops land, they have to put in a stormwater detention basins, and that is not only to help prevent flooding and manage the stormwater quantity, but where it used to just be a depression and the water would sit there for a little bit, now they've become high-tech and you have to put in skimmers and you have to have little micro pools where the water will hit first and spread out to capture the sediment. So every pretty water feature you see now has actually been.
They didn't put it in there for aesthetic reasons, when you see the fountain and the little pond and the development. Some years ago, they put them in there for a little bit of, of a look of the area, today they're required, the aeration's required, it's required to be maintained. The, the silting fence is, is the beginning of that, but also trucks leaving, the construction sites has been a big problem for us.
Right.
Even tracking mud down the roads that eventually runs off the road, runs into the ditches and, and, and follows its path to the rivers, all of that has to be monitored now and has to be controlled, and, and we do that all through the Stormwater District. And let me point out that we do that all with no employees too. We've just assumed that duties into our other roles and responsibilities. But with the construction boom that's going on and, and what we're seeing that's already on the drawing board, as we know in some of our communities, there's, they're seeing, they're going to see thousands and thousands of housing starts over the next ten years. And the sewers that we've been putting in in some communities, which is going to, the development's going to follow those sewers, it's becoming harder and harder with all these permitting processes, and, and there's still more to come. Although the person we have now, we work with that's over at Stormwater, she's really doing a great job.
Caroline has really come along, she, she's grown up very quickly with us.
Yeah, she, I'm very impressed. It's, it's, we're working more fine tuned now than we ever have before, and I'm, I'm very pleased with, with the job we're getting done out there.
With her, and then also Peterswick from the county engineer's office, we're actually to the point now, we've been so busy that monthly we get together for an hour just to, okay, what problems have you seen, who's doing what, how do we make this process better?
Part of the problem, we're also running into a question, I know we're a little bit off tangent with the, the stream restoration, but it bears some attention, is that a lot of the developers were trying to, the regulation's been out there for a while, but they've been not actively or aggressively pursued. More and more, we're, we're working under, under these, these regulations more tightly, and so there's some, there's some chafing. And we were in conversation yesterday with, with some engineers, because the developer felt that they were being unduly picked upon because they never had to comply with these regulations before. But it, it's a learning experience, and once we went through them and explained, we were able to, we were able to work it out. But there, there's going to be more of them to come. And quite frankly, we need the township's help because people start building in the township, they don't get the proper permitting, then we have to go out there, we try not to do a stop work order on them, and that becomes hard. But we're, we're, we're getting there. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work on this. Now, I guess we'll move to resolutions, right?
Under resolutions, there are no investments, appropriations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioner's authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary chief of employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County.
That would be Administrator Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey, I, I do have a, a few issues, higher over job and family services. The, I, I do, do have a completed copy, United Steelworkers America, eight-eight-four-five contract that, that was voted upon and ratified by the membership, I'm very pleased with that, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that contract. We don't have to act right now, but I want to update you on, on what's going on with that. And, and also ongoing legal issue that we've, we've talked about before. All three of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and we talk about those three issues that I've identified, thank you.
Approved, we have the reading of the minutes of September twenty-first.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Under community development, a work contract to Dr. Jeremy Watson at one sixty-four Park Avenue Amherst in the amount of nine thousand fifty-eight dollars or fifty percent of the total project cost up to ten thousand to receive grant assistance from CDBG program year fifteen set aside private rehabilitation activity to be paid from the CDBG DT fifteen contractual services account.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Normally, these are for private residential properties, but this one is actually downtown Amherst.
Downtown.
Commercial property.
This is actually the first award from our downtown revitalization grant that we've received from the state, the three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So this is about the first of maybe thirty you'll be seeing in the near future. And also, we'll be getting ready to break ground shortly on the parking that was previously awarded to Infinity Pave. So you'll be seeing a lot of activity through this program and those account numbers.
And let's remind everybody how much money we were able to get in this grant.
This was a three hundred thousand dollar grant through the state and is part of the, well, it's part of the overall block grant program. This was actually a competitive set aside, and in this case, this grant application was about, I think it was the second highest that had scored in the state. And as you can see also, it is, these grants to the downtown businesses are leveraging funds, it's a minimum of a dollar for dollar in private.
The, the, Don and I approached the board some time ago, we needed money to assist Amherst with, with the grant application to bring in a grants writer. While we have, we have talented staff, we needed, we needed that next, that next level of expertise and experience to help us with that. The board was generous and provided five thousand dollar seed money for the grant writer with.
Right, we worked directly with Main Street Amherst, and then they brought in to assist them, Pogomire Design Group.
If, without that investment, we wouldn't have three hundred thousand dollars. And, and so, you know, I think, I think, what does that come out to, about a point six percent investment for, for the funds that came here?
Sixty to one.
Okay, sixty-one sounds a bit more.
I don't think they had any chance of a race track.
Okay, there we go. The, the, but these are the type of opportunities that without the leadership of the board and without bringing some money to the table, that, that passes by. And, and we need, we need to make sure that they don't pass us by, we'll be looking for more of this. Is this a, this isn't every other year?
It is every year, we are, unfortunately, we were working with Oberlin, that one did not make it, we are waiting on a debriefing to get a good understanding as to why. Also, we have been working with downtown Wellington and their Main Street organization to get them ready, they had undergone some changes in personnel and whatnot.
Have they brought in a new director down there?
They have brought in a new director, I've met with her a couple of times, and we've got them right now looking at two potential project, or two different grant potential, one being downtown revitalization. They also have some property just outside of their downtown, they're looking at having some work done there, and they might be better fit for a neighborhood revitalization for that area just adjacent to downtown, they had a school that was demolished and they're looking to incorporate that into their downtown.
Is that the area north?
Ah, I think it's north and east.
Yeah.
Just outside of their downtown.
Yeah, because that's where they're actually, all the new developments is, is locating in Wellington.
And we're looking to kind of stretch out from there more into the neighborhoods and to get that nice and tight and then come back into the downtown. So they, we might be looking at over a couple of years, a couple of grants, and maybe starting with neighborhood revitalization first there to the downtown. And then depending on how our debriefing with the state goes with the city of Oberlin, we might be coming back there for a downtown revitalization. Or it could be Amherst again, lord knows, they're busy and they really know how to put together an application as well.
And a lot of, a lot of growth in Oberlin has been seen in the last few years, especially with the new hotel and the new conference center. We just posted a package on, on Visit Lorraine County, packaged up a deal with the golf course and the hotel for rooms and a couple rounds of golf, put a, shamelessly put a plug in there. But, but, so they've, they've seen a lot of good growth there. I'd really like to do something in Wellington. They've, they've struggled a bit, they've stalled a little bit, so it'd be great we can do something down there.
Yeah, I, I feel confident that we'll be putting in an application because they've been, you know, really willing to put in the work and to be able to, to get their community ready and have been open to us actually assisting them, which is also important, is for us to be able to work together. And with the new director there, it's been a very good relationship.
Yeah, it's grateful downtown.
Well, there's a lot to build upon, a lot of character, a lot of history. So, you know, and, and again, their development's happening just north, I would think that we're going to continue to see that, you have to, you know, the College Outreach Center was put out there a few years ago, and there's been some development off to the northwest side.
There's been the whole new underpass and everything else that's been.
It, it does improve the flow right, right through there, so.
Very nice, too.
But I want to thank the board for supporting us when we came to you. It's hard these days to find money and it's hard to have a vision of where the future is, but, but it definitely, we have to reach for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye. Under job and family authorized purchase service room with Dinah County Sheltered Industries, DBA Windfall Industries, Wadsworth, in the amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-two cents to provide a work experience program for supplemental nutrition assistance program recipients in federal fiscal year seventeen, effective October first, two thousand sixteen through September thirty, two thousand seventeen, and authorized director to execute in behalf of the Board of Prosecutors for this form.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Jim, is this all ready to go then to remodeling everything in regards to issue number eleven, the ODJFS and the training program?
Yes, yeah, why don't we speak to that a little bit?
I was hoping.
The, the, I'm sorry, I was reading another piece over here, I'm always trying to keep up with stuff.
We'll talk about how we did that, what we were able to do with our Port Authority building and the train workers.
There, there's a requirement, and I want to speak in macro terms because I, I just don't work with this every day, but, but I, you know, I met with Mary Lou and, and they have a requirement for work for certain people that receive benefits through job and family services, so they have, they have work elements that have to be accomplished in order to continue to maintain eligibility for those, for those assistances that they receive. eligibility for those assistances that they receive. They contract with companies to provide that work experience. And that sounds like an oxymoron, you have to pay somebody to pay somebody to do something. But unfortunately, that's the way it is. You're not dealing with folks that right now have complete employability sometimes, or there's other issues that limit their ability to stay fully engaged in the workplace. What we did was a rather unique, they needed a location for this company to provide the work that will employ these people. So we built a nice facility within the Port Authority building over on Abbey Road. So it's actually almost a building within a building. We had the space, and we had the parking there, and we're getting ready to open, and those folks will work out of that interior building inside that big warehouse for their work experience. The recovery on that, the ROI for that build out was about three years under the terms and conditions that we have right now. After that's completed, we'll change some of the cost factors because we'll have recovered the cost, and we can do more with the program then. So I'm very encouraged about these partnerships. As you know, last week, we entered into a contract with Job and Family Services for transportation services, one of the few federal dollars that can be, federal dollars that can be matched with other federal dollars to provide services in the community. This is another relationship that's really important to us, and if this works, it may take us even further. But you're gonna see more and more program dollars have a requirement to work. I don't see that changing anymore in the future. In fact, I see it increasing in the future as we go forward.
And if they only had transportation of that also, to get these people to the training, we might be in better shape.
Well, you know, it's, transportation is desperately needed. You know, I had a conversation last night, and while I'm not, I'm proud of the work we do in transit, I'm not proud of the transit. We have no money. It's not a lack of understanding, it's not a lack of experience or ability to run something bigger and better and nicer in the community, it's a lack of money. I don't care how talented you are, I don't care how good your experience and your leadership is, you don't have any money. You can't put rolling stock on the street. You can't put that service out there. And it always comes down to money. And the transportation issue, Commissioners, you allude to getting people to work is a money issue. And so, that's another shameless plug for our tax that's coming up here on the ballot. A good portion of that is being dedicated to transit. I would be amazed, and, excuse me, but I would be really, really happy to see a lot of rolling stock on the street and taking people hopefully to future employment opportunities. Thank you.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski. Aye.
Under the Sheriff renewed the medical services agreement with Dr. Richard Kelster, M.D., to provide certain medical services to the inmates, effective October first, two thousand sixteen, through September thirty, two thousand seventeen, at a fee of two-hundred and four dollars per hour, or contains a thirty-day cancellation clause.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Renew a psychological services agreement with Dr. Deborah Carricki to provide certain medical services to the inmates, effective October first, two thousand sixteen, through September thirty, two thousand seventeen, at a fee of fifty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents per hour, and contains a thirty-day cancellation clause.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Miss Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
I'm all talked out for this morning. I'll yield the counsel.
Mr. Ennis.
I have, Commissioners, I have two matters of pending litigation I need to update you in executive session.
Commissioners report.
Well, as I stated earlier, I stopped out at the dog kennel on Friday. I wanted to just say, the facility was so clean, I told you about all the leashes and collars that were all there, but I'll tell you, this place is busy. There's people coming in and out of there the whole time I was there, looking at dogs, you know, checking to see what was available. So I'm really proud of what's been going on there. We have a great staff, we have a lot of great volunteers that come and help, and our rescue groups, we work well with all of them. So I just want to congratulate our dog kennel, our warden, and all of our employees out there who are doing a great job.
Commissioner, let me pile on that. You know, off and on, we've had considerable distress, problems with the dog kennel, ups and downs that have been amazing, quite frankly. Bringing on the right people and having the right people do the right job really makes my life much better, it also makes your life much better, and it improves services in the community. I can't speak enough to the work that Tim's done at the dog kennel, but we have a need in the future that I'll be talking to you about. We do need a newer facility. The facility was put up in nineteen ninety-eight. It was not a good facility, or a good design when it was done. It leaves a lot of challenges and a lot to be desired, and next year, I hope to be having a conversation with you about how we can either work to modify that building as part of a bigger build or to complete a new kennel. You've been out there enough, they keep it clean, they work really hard at that, but it's a poor facility.
Yep.
And whoever, whenever that was designed and why it was done that way, I wasn't here when it was done, so I'm not gonna, you know, guess at why, but half a pole building with a block structure attached to it doesn't work. And I would hope that we'll do that and do it right. There's resources coming into the kennel, how we look at that funding, it doesn't have to be a burden onto the general fund. The last time that building was built, shortly before I left, I convinced the Commissioners that time to loan the money to the Dog and Kennel Fund and allow them to pay it back. We're not gonna be in a situation like that now due to our own cash flow problems, but we can still add that build to part of some of our bigger bonding and pay some debt service from the kennel fund. The demands are only gonna increase, they're not gonna decrease with regard to that facility. So those are gonna be the talks for next year. Thank you.
Looking forward to that. Friday evening, I had an opportunity to go to my second Indians game of this year. We went down to Tremont Street to pick up some people, and I took Uber to the game, and I took Lyft from the game back to Tremont. And I just want to say, Uber and Lyft, it's really, a really cool idea of what they do.
Did you use your app? Did you use your app on your phone?
I didn't have the app, but the people that we went with did.
You were brand new, if you used the app, they would give you a discount.
Right, they would, actually, they give you some, and they give you some free miles and.
Oh, okay.
I've used Uber in Italy, in Rome. I use it all over the country. It's really great when it functions properly.
Yeah.
Now, I watch my app here in Lorain County occasionally, there's very limited Uber. Mostly, it's on the east side of the county. There is some Uber going east out of Lorain County, but it's a great service.
Yeah, there's no money exchanging hands, so you don't have to worry about that, and, I mean, it's really, a really neat thing. So hopefully, that'll increase here in Lorain County like it is over there in Cuyahoga County. Let's see, Saturday, I went to the Lorain County National Council of Negro Women at the Knights in Lorain. They dedicated one of those stone markers for Dr. Church that we have down at Black River Landing, that Station One Hundred, the Underground Railroad Monument that we did back in, I don't know, it must have been two thousand and six or seven?
Yeah, somewhere.
Yeah, so that was nice. They had a nice lunch for us. And then, Sunday, I went to DeLuca's for Chris Cook had a brunch there. And then Monday, the Realtors Association had me in, and I got a chance to sit down and talk to them about different things going on in Lorain County. And then Monday afternoon, I had my Goodwill board meeting, who, well, we have another CEO. She's, name was Barbara Hawk, Hup, something like that, just met her Monday, and she actually came from another Goodwill, I think Sandusky area. So she's very familiar with our mission and knows a lot about Goodwill, so I think she's gonna take us to the next level. Really excited about that. And I did talk to her a little bit about the contract that we get from Job and Family Services for the work experience, and she was aware of it, she knew that we had given money back in previous years, and she's gonna work very hard to make sure that they use up all that money this time, so. And then this morning, we had our Economic Industrial Development Corporation meeting before this meeting, and I think that is the end of my report.
Sombre week, actually, to start it. Your Trooper Velez's funeral, opportunity to see family, a lot of old friends while we were there. Law enforcement turned out amazing from all over the country. I mean, not only stayed all over the country, but a real somber turnout, and Kenny was a heck of a guy, and again, to his parents, his family, his children were just amazing. They laid him to rest, so. Thank you, Kenny Velez, for all your service. Yeah, a lot of events this week. Community Action had their wine, Second Harvest Food Bank, their Second Generations fundraiser Friday night, nice turnout again, very nice event. This morning, Lorain County Economic Development Investment Court met the Board of Commissioners along with Buckeye Bank, the auditor, treasurer, to go over our lending portfolio. It's in very good shape. We've got a lot of money to lend, though, so if you're looking at a revolving loan fund, we're looking for businesses who'd like to expand, so please stop in and see us. You can call the Commissioner's office, you can call Community Development, but we do have dollars out there for companies who are looking to invest and hire people.
Let's, Commissioner, just for an aside on that, I want to remind everybody that we've been successful at getting a waiver to use CDBG funds within the city of Lorain. They've had some issues with their funds that have limited their ability to do the CDBG loans out there. Don and his staff, we all met, we had this conversation about, we have to do something. These are important funds. We petitioned the state, and since they weren't able to do any lending in Lorain, we've been able to extend our CDBG into Lorain. I don't expect that to continue in perpetuity, but currently, if anybody does want some assistance, we can cover portions of the city of Lorain. These are one-offs, but once they gave us the green light, I'm certain that we can get, again, going in the future for each application until they're up and running in Lorain again.
Actually, I made those comments during the meeting this morning, Jim, in regards to not having their loan board anymore and the county's ability to work forward with the state giving us waivers.
I suppose if I'd have gotten to the meeting I was supposed to, I would have heard that. You're free to say that.
There's enough of us there, it was covered, get something else done. End of my report.
You know, I'd also like to express our sympathies, obviously, to the family of Trooper Velez, and wow, what an amazing turnout by the whole community. You know, it just, once again, shows the dangers of those who serve in our, you know, safety forces here at home. I mean, they truly are hometown heroes, and every day, they walk out the door, and families just don't know if they're coming home that evening or not, or that day. So our sympathies continue to go out to the family. Lorain County Community Alliance, we recently met, lay out a schedule for the upcoming year, and we'll have some interesting announcements to make here in the weeks ahead. I've been asked to serve as the president of the Lorain County Community Alliance this year and really enjoy working with our city government and our township government, villages. It's a great collaborative effort by everyone, and I know the folks in Columbus, when I was down there, and I'd tell them about our concept of a community alliance, they were quite amazed that we had everybody working together like that on the same page, and you can accomplish good things when you work together. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the North Ridgeville Chamber of Commerce luncheon and heard Bob DiBiaseo speak. He's Public Relations Director for the Cleveland Indians, and I think, I always said, if I had a choice of another job, that would be the one that I probably most would want. I just wonder if it's as much fun when you transition from being a fan to actually working in the business, but he told a lot of, told a lot of great stories. Had the opportunity to attend Chris Cook's event on Sunday at DeLuca's, and very much enjoyed that event, saw a lot of good folks there, a great turnout for that. Congratulations to UH and the City of North Ridgeville on the groundbreaking of the new facility there. North Ridgeville just continues to explode with growth, much like Avon, Columbia Station, so many of our communities, lots of good things going on in this county, and, you know, sometimes people say this county's not going anywhere. You look at the growth, we are going in a very positive direction, and trying to make sure we have sensible growth as we move forward. I'll be attending a meeting with Main Street Elyria as they lay out more of their programming throughout the course of the year. Congratulations go out to our Cleveland Indians, Central Division champs, and then they put the bench in last night and some shaky starting pitching, and then we lost, what, twelve to nothing, I think, last night? But, so it was champagne one day and misery the next.
Yeah, but those are really bad.
But nonetheless, if anybody wants to help as a starting pitcher for the Indians, we could use you now because we'll need some pitching moving forward. And also, want to say happy birthday to my wife, Marva, who had a birthday on Saturday. I told her it was her twenty-first birthday, and that's the only discussion and argument I've won to date, so. That concludes, well, one more thing I did want to note. I had the opportunity to speak with the county administrator and with my colleagues, and the Board of County Commissioners will be holding town hall meetings coming up, starting next week throughout the month of October and into the week of November. The town hall meetings will include discussions about the county finances, what is ahead for the county, also taking a look as the coroner laid out and as our crime lab director laid out, the role the county government is playing in trying to fight this heroin epidemic. So we'll be covering all of those issues at the town hall meetings we'll be holding for them. We're still in the process of arranging what the locations will actually be, but we're looking at Tuesday, October fourth, Tuesday, October eleventh, Wednesday, October nineteenth, Tuesday, November first. The plan now is to, we have a meeting scheduled already for Sheffield Village Hall, and we're working on meetings that will be held in Elyria, Lorain, and also in the township area. And we'll be covering issues thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and any other questions that the community might have. The plan is that we'll have those starting at six o'clock, be wrapping up seven o'clock, sometime shortly after seven, could go as late as eight o'clock. But we would encourage everyone to attend, we'll be getting that specific location information out to members of the media and out to the community.
Amen. In regards to the discussion, let's just say it starts at six.
Right.
And when it ends, it ends.
It ends, sure. Midnight.
Go with a timeline of whatever it takes.
It's good.
Brad and Kayla will like being there, right?
Yeah.
Kayla wasn't even listening, she was busy texting, so she didn't even know what we talked about.
Yeah.
Email, okay.
Well, we just, you know, it's really important to inform the community about just how serious our financial outlook is for the future, which is very dark and darker by the day. It's also important to inform people about the important role that this initiative can play in getting people to work. The number one thing I hear all the time is, Commissioner, what are we doing about jobs in the county? Well, we've got a great way of getting a lot of people to work if we can improve our transit system, and, you know, to look at the possibility of bringing four to four and a half million dollars to the table, matching that with federal dollars, growing that to nearly nine million dollars. This is an important opportunity for the county in going forward with the way our finances are. The need doesn't go away in government. You know, there was an event I went to recently where an individual said, there's a big difference between the private sector and government, in the private sector, it's about profit, you know, and so you can raise the prices. In government, it's about services, and the only way you can provide those services are through taxes. And I can't say enough about how serious our finances are. This is something that has to happen, something that needs to take place, and community support is badly needed, and I think it's a win-win situation. It helps to stabilize county government, and at the same time, it helps to get more people to work and to their jobs and really start growing an important and effective transit system.
You mentioned nine million dollars for transit. I thought the administrator mentioned it all in, it would be closer to twelve million that would be raised with that fifty percent going to transit?
As a ten-thousand-foot view, at a minimum, not immediately, but over time, at a minimum, we would be able to get matching dollars, one to one. That's the fifty percent money that's available for operations. Now, you know, because we've been trying to get support from the Move group, but we really haven't had an opportunity to talk much about how this money multiplies with any certainty and specificity. The maintenance dollars, which are quite a bit of dollars because you have to maintain the rolling stock, you need tires, oil changes, and things break, those funds are eighty, twenty dollars. So the maintenance dollars, we get, we spend twenty cents, we get eighty cents for maintenance. And then, of course, at, at times, we're able to get the Ohio State Department of Transportation to bring some money to the table with regard to capital expenditures. We always will get money from the state for their rural communities, for discounted fares, for seniors and, and handicapped folks that ride the transportation, so we get, we get a reimbursement element there. Once again, those funds are not considered, they're considered local dollars, so I can use those funds from the state to even further amplify those dollars. In addition, if the services increase, the fare box is going to increase. Now, fare box is not considered local money. How the, how the FTA looks at this is that they've already provided the money for the rolling stock, so any income derived from that rolling stock has already been matched by the federal government. But exponentially, the fare box will go up significantly. Now, I, I, I don't think it's going to go up, if we put 10 times many buses in the road, it's not going to go up 10 times. There, there is certainly, it's going to gradually increase, but I would expect probably about a 5X growth on, on the fare box with more riders. In addition, if you recall, when we had a lot of rolling stock on the street, at the peak year, without even working very hard at it, because we didn't have a lot of folks, we were bringing in about $150,000 a year from the advertising on the buses, which is considered local money. People riding aren't considered local money with the fare, but the advertising dollars are considered local money, and we were able to use those funds to get additional FTA dollars. So I would think that a $5,000, a $5 million investment would generate right around a $12 million plus transit. Four million, because you're looking at the Medicaid issue, and that, that is a big consideration. We're estimating what, a two to two and a half million dollar loss due to the changes and the sales tax on those services. So if it's four million, you're still looking at probably around close to $10 million in the transit. And I, and I think that's a little bit low, it depends on how we pull the pieces together. But as I explained to Commissioner Lundey, well, I don't think it was Commissioner Lundey, I was talking to Tony Gallow. We're not going to be able to queue immediately for a lot more money. We've had a problem matching the money that we already have, but I would go after often money, similar to what we've been doing when they, we've released dollars, because we have not been able to use those dollars for operations. So I would, I would work with the FTA on, on getting those often dollars at other communities in similar situations. We are not the only one in the country like this, are having problem spending, and I would hope to get us queued for some of those dollars. But, but the, the most important thing, and the hardest thing to do, is we don't have a fleet of buses sitting here to roll down the road.
Got to buy buses.
Yeah, we have to get, we have to get rolling stock, and that, that takes time, and it takes time to get queued for those funds. And, and to run out and immediately buy rolling stock with 100% local money is not the best use of local money, so it's going to take time. During the, the recession, we were getting buses 100%, 100% paid for by the federal government. And if you remember the big fight we had with them, when they demanded we turn over those 10 buses that we, we had, that we wouldn't, we couldn't use at the time, because we didn't have money to roll them, and they demanded we turn them over to another transit agency, and we blocked them in the warehouse and told them, come and get them, at your own peril. Well, they never did, and we're using them, we're using them today. It was quite a dust-up with, with the Fed on that. I reminded that Mr. Obama gave us the, President Obama, excuse me, gave us the stimulus money to buy those buses, and they were ours. The, the, but rolling, rolling stock is going to be a big problem for us, as well as we're already putting what we have to extreme use with the new contract, with, with Job and Family Services, so it's not going to be, the money comes in and we flip the switch, and, and things are happening immediately. It's going to take a year or two to even work into that funding, which is a little bit less than half than the estimate that was put out there for a full percentage, a full quarter percent to support transit. I think I told you then, and I tried to explain to people, that I thought that that kind of money would take us three, maybe four years to fully be able to exploit the match on that. And, and, and just doing 100% spend is not the answer.
Well, there is the ability in rolling stock, though, Jim, that you can do in advance to it, and then when those dollars come available, come back and pay them, so you're not going to pay 100% necessarily for the first batch of rolling stock.
You can, Commissioner, to, to a point.
Correct, to a point.
Right.
There is a portion that you can spend that isn't 100% money, so that would be the dollars we would approach first.
And, and of course, we're not, we're not guaranteed those dollars, because they're the often dollars, and there's a timeframe for when we can get reimbursed for that, to get them on the street, and that borrowing would have to be done by the county. We're struggling right now with the borrowing, as you know, I'm getting ready for another rating presentation.
Invite it to sales tax, where the pass that would help us out in regards to that borrowing situation. I mean, it, it covers a couple of things, because it's only four million for transit, then four million for the county.
Correct.
Because the Medicaid rollback is looking at about, in two to 2.4 million dollars in less county funds next year, because it's about $700,000 per quarter percent.
Commissioner, even without the decrease in Medicaid funding this year, and with no increases anticipated in contracts, which we know we, we have increases in those contracts, no inflationary costs, we were entering next year, even going in par, we were probably $3 million less than we were this year. We had two one-offs that, that accounted for 2.75 million dollars, that, that we're not going to be able to duplicate next year. And then, of course, with the Medicaid lumped on top of that, you were looking, we were looking at between five and six million dollars of revenue changes next, that, that we had to deal with next year. And, and, and it's unfortunate, but we keep seeing areas that we were hopeful that are going to increase, and then they get taken away from us. We've seen the decrease in the local government, we've seen, we've seen the changes in our investment portfolio. I can tell you again, it's inching up a little bit, but the bond market's still at the bottom and hasn't recovered, the recession's still alive and well in the bond market. How do you go from almost $8 million of interest income?
Over eight million.
Eight million plus of interest income to barely over $1 million over a three-year period? I don't know if anybody can take a $7 million shift in their revenue. And let's point out that that's more than 10%, that's like 12 or 13% of what the general fund was. You know, and, and those things have changed. They've changed, and you have nothing that you can do about that. The investment strategies that are out there are the best that could be applied under the very restrictive requirements of the Ohio Revice Code. You're, you're, you're at the mercy of the yield curve, and it's been bottomed out for way long. Well, we dipped through this yield curve before. It does go up and down, it's not a new phenomenon, but it really dropped rock bottom this time, and it hasn't had a, you know, usually gradually goes down and gradually goes up. This one just bottomed and stayed there. And, and so, the fine fault with the Board of Commissioners is because they need $8 million more, $7 million more, $6 million more, when those things have been stripped out of your arsenal of how you make the county work is, is not correct. And, and of course, I'm not even adding the inflationary cost and, and other things that have to come, and we're, last week, we recapitalized $10 million worth of notes for work that has to be done.
Well, as I've told people before, you know, when conversations come up about finances with government, everybody talks about, what are you going to cut, and what are you going to cut? Shouldn't we be having more conversations about how we can actually grow your money as taxpayers? This is an example of that. You know, we just talked about a grant that was coming in, we've got a planning grant that's coming in, that's going to help us do planning around transit, which is very important to point out, because, you know, transit, what it was even just years ago isn't the same that it is today. We can really strategically look at how to have effective routes, how to really get people to work. But when I talked about cuts versus growing your money, as you pointed out, you know, if, if I came to your door and said, give me $2, I'm going to give you 8, you'd be doing that all day long. So the opportunity is there for us to actually grow your money, not just talk about cuts all the time, actually grow your money, which is a good thing, but we just haven't had the money to put on the table. And I just think what we're proposing for the residents of this county, to stabilize county government, and to definitely get transit on track and get people to work, is, is a very reasonable proposal.
Commissioner, let me, just for a minute, with regard to cuts. We've never restored any of the cuts from 2010 and 11. So this is if we went through this, we cut people, and then we chubby'd up again after that, and we're going to unchubby and cut some of the fat again.
Jim, that was eight, nine?
That was eight, no, well, we went, we did layoffs again in 10, didn't we? Or reductions?
Reductions, okay, but nine was the first round of layoffs.
So we can go back and count the amount of employees, at least in our departments that we've had, had at that time, and, and demonstrate that, that we've never replaced those positions. The Commissioners are sharing one assistant, we used to have three. The, the, we're one, we're one deep in almost every position, which makes that job critical, no matter how, how important it should be to the organization. It's critical, because there's one, one deep in the department.
No Assistant County Administrator, no Purchasing Director anymore, if you combine it with the Budget Department, we can go on and on and on. The amount of custodial maintenance no longer employed.
Oh, project management, it, we used to have a lot more folks, okay, so you got to make it work. They say, you know, do more with less. I always said you do less with less, but we've, 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 we've applied the efficiencies, we've applied all the practices we can to squeeze the most amount of resources out of what we have. So cutting is probably not going to be an option, just, the Auditor's Office didn't, is, is understaffed, the Treasurer's Office is understaffed. And you go down the road, and you look at this, and, and they haven't added a great deal of anything since, since the late beginning of the 2000s. So it's not, it's not fat, and it's, it's not even muscle, it's scraping on the bone for, for what you'd think you're going to come up with in cuts. And the amount of cuts that would be necessary, I don't know where they would come in, in this part of the general fund, and, and just the administrative side of the general fund, you're talking about several millions of dollars. None of the departments are that big.
These Town Hall meetings are going to be important for the public, the town and the media, to explain everything that's going on, in spite of whatever move doesn't want to support, or they want to oppose, or whatever the issue may be with that group. There's other people who care about what's going on in this county, and why there's a reason this needs to pass.
And, and just for clarification, because some of our cities have struggled, like Lorraine has been struggling, and they've gone to a bit of a four-day work week, they've done those things, we don't have the authority to furlough employees.
Did we have a window of opportunity back then to do that for state businesses?
State Legislature passed, passed, passed some legislation, it was, it sunsetted, but it was for a period of two or three years where you could furlough employees. So our union contracts don't have furlough provisions, provisions, they have layoff provisions, and civil service employees cannot be furloughed, there's no law for it in the code that you can operate under. You have layoff language. And as, as we watch the city of Lorraine wrestle with this, you get no results from layoff for several months. We're a pay-as-you-go employer, so we're not in a risk pool. All, all governments will pay as they go, so those claims have to be paid. So you have to do almost a double, if you've got to do 60% more than what you originally needed, because you've got to make those numbers work until you get through the, the benefits period with folks that are laid off. It's a crippling effect, and, and again, I know Lorraine's been suffering with that, I'm not being critical of them, but, but those are lessons learned over there, when you wait too long, or there's not enough people to reduce. The city here is able, though, that they have some self-rule determination that allow them to do furloughs and short work weeks. We just don't own those, those, those under the Ohio Vice Code.
And as you folks at home hear our gloom and doom story, remember there's a $2 billion, that's with a B, $2 billion surplus sitting down in Columbus.
Of our money.
Our money, your money, taxpayers' money, it's not coming back to your communities.
Chris, Kayla, what are we, 38 or 39 in transit funding in the country?
In the country? We're like 48 or 49. It's not 30, it's 48. We're near the bottom.
And what size is Ohio in comparison to, we're like?
The 11th state, largest state in the country, yeah.
Larger state, and we're 48 from state, funding for transit.
Yeah. Michigan, I think, is $15 per person, is that what the dollars in Michigan were? Commissioner Lundey?
It's over $12.
It's over 12 in Michigan, and we're about, I don't know, 29 cents and change, two bits and change?
Well, you know, it's.
It's not, I mean, we're 11 and a half million people, and I think the last appropriation was around $6 million for public transit in Ohio, so 50 cents, two bits, four bits, take your, gain a whole lot of bits.
I know you, I defer to you on that, because you did the NOAC, and they're keenly aware of that, lobbying for that. It's really a dismal number.
Commissioners have sent retirement proclamations to two JFS employees, Marge Kylie at 40 years, and Roxanne Butcher at 23 years, and they also did a proclamation to the National Federation of Blind of Lorraine County proclaiming October is Meet the Blind Month, and 15th is White Canes Safety Day. Board of Correspondents?
I move that we approve the Board of Correspondents and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Gallow?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to participate in public comment this morning? Seeing no participants for public comment, I would move that we go into executive session, discuss personnel issues outlined by the County Administrator, and the legal issues outlined by the Assistant Prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Gallow?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.